Hello and welcome to the Monday, October 27, 2025 Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting. In accordance with the state's Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on January 8, 2025 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. Mr. Eckert, if we could please take role.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Nurse?
Here.
Ms. Stats?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
I'm sorry. We'll start with him. You can go back to me. Thanks, we have a call. All right, we'll take a motion to move into executive session where as the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, the laws of 1975, provide that a public body may exclude the public from the portion of that meeting which the public body discusses certain matters which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7b of the act resolved by the Board of Education, the Township of Hillsborough, and the County of Somerset and the State of New Jersey as follows: matters to be discussed are personnel matters; the matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion in a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? We'll be back around 7:30, thank you.
I know I always have a computer. I've always had a computer. Wait, wait, wait. No, no, no. Oh, my computer. Yeah, no.
I have a good text.
Oh, my computer. Yeah, no.
Power, I guess.
Sure. Hello and welcome back to the Monday, October 27, 25 Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting. We are back from executive session. Mr. Record, if we could please take role. Mr. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Nurse?
Here.
Ms. Stats?
Here.
Ms. Trahill?
Here.
And Mr. Marini. Here, we have a call and we can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. In the blood of the United States of America, in the name of our Father, and of which He stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
I would like to acknowledge the correspondence as listed. And we'll move on with the Board President's report. We do have two recognitions. I think one we're going to be presenting tonight. And Mr. Volpe will read the summary and I will present the certificate.
Sure. One of the things the board has wanted to do over the past couple of years is to recognize outstanding staff members for achievements and accomplishments. And we have one of those staff members here tonight. It's Victoria Samansky here. Come on up to the podium, please, Victoria. And let me tell the public why she's coming up. It's with great pride that we share that Victoria, one of our outstanding second grade teachers, has been selected to join the NGSS Teacher Leader Program. This highly regarded program supports the implementation of the New Jersey Science Standards through rich professional development experiences and collaboration with experts in the field. Going into its 12th year, the NGSS Teacher Leader Program is a partnership between the Science Education Institute at Raritan Valley Community College, Leadership and Science LLC, and the Princeton University Teacher Preparation Program. As part of this program, Ms. Samansky will join only 60 exceptional educators across the state. She will have opportunities to co-facilitate professional development programs such as the NGSS Summer Institute, the School Year Science Workshop Series at RVCC, and Princeton's Quest Program. Through these experiences, she will strengthen her leadership in science education and bring valuable strategies and insights back to our school district. Please join me congratulating Ms. Samansky on this incredible accomplishment and continuing to inspire excellence in science teaching and learning. Victoria, is there anything that you'd like to say at the podium quickly about this significant achievement?
I want to thank you personally. We built such a big deal. It was just exciting. They brought out and they asked me to write the assignment and I was excited for it. And then my friends said, oh, you're really downplaying it. Like, I'm not. I didn't know it was such a big deal. So thank you.
Yeah, that's great. There's only, there's a lot of teachers throughout the entire state that teach science from K to 12, and you're only one of 60 who's a part of this. So congratulations to you and thank you so much.
And I have one other proclamation to read. Mike doesn't know about this. Whereas the Hillsborough Township Board of Education proudly recognizes the exemplary leadership and tireless commitment of its administrators in creating a safe and secure learning environment for our students. And whereas Michael J. Volpe, Superintendent of Schools for the Hillsborough Township Public School District, has demonstrated outstanding commitment and excellence in prioritizing the safety and security of all students and staff. And whereas the National Association of School Superintendents Excellence Award for School Safety and Security represents a prestigious national honor, recognizing exemplary leadership in developing, implementing, and maintaining comprehensive school safety and security measures. And whereas Michael J. Volpe has been honored with the prestigious 2025 National Association of School Superintendents Excellence Award for School Safety and Security in recognition of his exemplary leadership, his unwavering dedication to protecting the school community, and his significant contributions to the field of school safety. And whereas this esteemed national award underscores Mr. Volpe's vision for a secure educational environment, his commitment to student well-being, and his exceptional ability to implement proactive and effective security protocols, now therefore be proclaimed that the Hillsborough Township Board of Education on this 27th day of October in the year 2025 does hereby extend its warmest congratulations and profound appreciation to Michael J. Volpe for his outstanding achievement in receiving the National Association of School Superintendent's 2025 Excellence Award for School Safety and Security. It be resolved that this proclamation be entered into the official records of Hillsborough Township Board of Education. Do you have any comments that you'd like to make?
Thank you so much. I didn't know that that was coming, and I don't know if I turned red or not, but I really appreciate the board's recognition of that. And the only other thing that I want to say is school safety and security is everybody's job. So I want to thank every single staff member who has heightened their awareness and made sure that things are the way that they're supposed to be. I want to thank our security staff, a couple of members who are here tonight. I really just want to thank everybody who's been a part of the vision, and I most especially want to thank David Stoco, our Coordinator of School Safety Operations, and Joel Handler, our Director of Technology, who have worked hand in hand with me on many things. And I also want to thank my wife, who has been up with me many a night when I have been worried about safety and security issues and what can I do to make Hillsborough a better place, and she has certainly supported me. So this was unnecessary, but very much appreciated, and I'll continue to do the best that I can for Hillsborough. So thank you.
And then did you want to mention the other person? Oh, yes. We also wanted to recognize Bob Fenster, who also received the Excellence in Education Award from the New Jersey Society of the Cincinnati. So he was unable to join us tonight, but we'd like to recognize him as well. And that concludes the Board President's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's a couple of items under my superintendent's report tonight. And the first one will be a presentation by Dr. Lisa Rabimbas about the NJSLA and DLM statewide assessment results. So I'll be putting that up on the big screen behind me. And Lisa, if you just want to give me a little thumbs when I need to advance the slide.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight I will present Hillsborough Township Public Schools NJSLA and DLM results for the spring of 2025. So we will begin first with the scores of the NJSLA, which stands for the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments. This includes a district summary of all scores. This assessment covered English Language Arts, or ELA, for grades three through nine, mathematics for grades three through eight, and three higher level math courses, along with science grades five, eight, and 11. The corresponding NJSLA proficiency levels are exceeding, meaning approaching, partially meeting, and not meeting. Second, I will review the dynamic learning map, working on one. Scores, which is designed to assess students with severe cognitive differences.
See, is that better? Sounded like a little robot. The DLM is designed to assess students with the most severe cognitive differences. Students are tested in literacy and math in grades three through eight and grade 11, and science in grades five, eight, and 11. The DLM proficiency levels are advanced, at target, approaching target, and emerging. Looking at our participation numbers, a total of 3,913 students were tested on the NJSLA across grades three through nine. We can see specific participation numbers here, such as 488 students in grade three and 555 students in grade nine. Please note that all the grade 11 students take the NJGPA, and those scores were presented separately in August of 2025. We will begin the data portion of the presentation with the English Language Arts scores. As you can see, the district continues to far exceed the state percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations at each grade level. As a district, the grades with the highest percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations were grades four and seven, 73.2% and 74.3%, respectively. Here, we will examine the ELA achievement and growth by looking at the achievement level distribution for the same grade across the two most recent years. So 2023 to 2024 and 2024 to 25. This data involves different groups of students each year. The achievement levels displayed are not meeting or partially meeting expectations. Those are in red and orange, approaching expectations, which is in yellow, and meeting and exceeding expectations, which are in the light green and the green. We can observe the overall distribution for each grade from grades three through nine and the aggregate results across all grades. So every two bars is one grade level, just as you're going across. And the final two bars to my right, as I'm facing the screen, are for all grades. When you analyze the scores between the '24 administration and the '25 administration, you will see that in grades five, six, seven, and eight, the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations increased from one year to another. The darker green notes exceeding expectations, as I said, and the lighter green meeting expectations. It is important to remember that between these grades, there are different groups of students. This, along with other data, is used to internally begin our deeper analysis on individual students, grade level curriculum, and intervention strategies. Another way to view the data is reviewing it and analyzing it by tracks or groups of students. So this slide shows two groups of students, students in the cohort and students not in the cohort. So they're grouped by, again, comparing one year to another. The double bars are together. The current year, that spring of 2025, is in the deeper purple. So students in the cohort tested with Hillsborough in the spring of '24, and the students not in the cohort did not test or were not part of our system here in Hillsborough, meaning that they may be new to our schools. The on-cohort data overall shows an increase in percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations. You can, you can specifically see this increase in grades four, six, seven, and eight. Overall, the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations in the entire district increased from the spring of 2024 to the spring of 2025. So that's when you're looking again at the screen, you look at the, from the right, if you come in, count in from the right, it's the third and fourth bars that I'm talking about, the students that are in our cohort. Moving now to mathematics, this slide represents the overall district proficiency for students grades three through eight, focusing on students meeting or exceeding expectations. Our district consistently demonstrates proficiency rates higher than the state average. Grade, grade four shows the highest district proficiency at 78.8 compared to the state's 46.7%. Even in grade eight, where 37% of the students met or exceeded proficiency, this is nearly double the rate of the state, which is 20.7%. Continuing with the mathematics proficiency, this slide highlights Algebra I, Geometry and Algebra II. The district proficiency for students meeting or exceeding expectations in Algebra I all grades was 69.4, far exceeding the state's 37.9. We saw a strong performance in geometry for all grades at 84.6%. Notably, in Algebra II for all grades, we achieved 100% proficiency compared to the state's 72.5%. It is important to note that students in grades seven and eight who qualify may participate in Algebra I, and students who take Algebra I in seventh grade take geometry in grade eight. Therefore, the presentation of the data for Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II includes students grades seven through 12. Again, the district far exceeds the state percentage. So this wonderful bar graph is quite complicated, and because there are more courses in math, it is, it is a little bit more cumbersome than the literacy data. But the color coding is the same with the red and the orange, not meeting expectations, the yellow approaching, the green meeting expectations, and the darker green exceeding expectations. Again, it gives a comparison of achievement distribution from the spring 2024 administration to the spring 2025 administration. Overall, the percentage of students meeting and exceeding expectation remains mathematically about the same from year to year. However, there's a slight increase in the percentage of students exceeding expectations, the darker green. Again, I'd like to note that 100% of our Algebra II students met expectations. Reviewing the data by cohort of the same students within Hillsborough from their spring 2024 testing to the spring 2025 testing, you will see the same percentage of meeting or exceeding expectations from the previous year, again, far exceeding the state average. I just want to highlight a couple of interesting points. When you look at the students within the cohort, grade six to Algebra I, 100% of the students met or exceeded expectations. Algebra I middle school to Geometry Middle School, 100% of the students met or exceeded expectations. Algebra I middle school to Algebra II grade nine, 100% of the students met or exceeded expectations. Geometry Middle School to Algebra II High School, the same cohort of students, 100% of students met expectations. Some wonderful data there for our student achievement. Next, we'll look at science. Looking at the overall district proficiency for science for students meeting or exceeding standards in grades five, eight, and 11, you will see that for grade five, 50% of our students met or exceeded proficiency compared to 30.1% of the state in the statewide assessment scores. And grade 11 showed the highest district proficiency at 56% compared to 31.3 in the state. Similar to the other slides, this shows our achievement and growth by grade level for students tested in '23, '24 school year and the '24, '25 school year, different groups of students, but still comparing the each grade to itself. The science proficiency levels are a little bit different than in ELA and in math, where there's below proficiency, near proficiency, proficient, and advanced proficiency. So this chart compares the distribution by grade as well as combined for all students. The color coding is the same, where the, the green, the darker green tone exceeds expectations, and the lighter green tone, tone is for meeting expectations. Overall, when you review the data for all grades, there was an increase in the students meeting, exceeding, and partially meeting expectations. Now we'll move on to the demographic analysis of the testing results. The state requires the analysis of the data segmented by race and by educational program. As reviewed, as we review the next few slides, please keep in mind a few important considerations. The data presented from year to year are generally not the same students, and consequently, the number of students in the count in each core, in each category will change from year to year. So we're not comparing the same cohort of students one year to another, we're just comparing year to year to itself. So to provide a context for the data, here are the total number of students who completed the NJSLA in the spring of 2024 and the spring of 2025 in each category. The first number in each row represents the number of students who completed the ELA assessment. The second is for those who completed the math assessment, and the last is for those who completed the science assessment. As with any grade band, there are fluctuations in enrollment, and that accounts for the change in number. The total number of students tested in all grades for the The total number of students tested in all grades for the spring was three thousand nine hundred and thirteen, for ELA, three thousand nine hundred and eighteen for math, and one thousand seven hundred and seventy-six for science. Here, we see the proficiency by race for ELA, displaying the achievement level distribution across all grades for different racial groups. This data allows us to compare the percentages of students in the five achievement categories not meeting through exceeding expectations within groups such as Asian, Black, Hispanic, multiple, other, and white students for both the twenty-three and twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five testing periods. As a reminder, the colors represent the degree to which the students met the expectations. The percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations ranges from forty-seven percent to eighty-three percent. Those students are represented by the light green and green colors. Overall, although there are shifts up and down a few percentage points from one year to the next, we continue to be at similar levels. This slide represents proficiency by race for mathematics across all grades. The visual allows us to analyze the distribution achievement levels for all of our students categorized by race over the past two years. As you look at the scores in math, you will see the students meeting or exceeding expectations range from forty percent to eighty-six percent in each subgroup. Moving to science, again, we are looking at the data proficiency by race using the four science achievement levels. We can examine how different racial groups performed in the science assessment across all grades in both twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five cycles. An interesting highlight in this data is the increase of enrollment in the Hispanic population from one hundred and ninety students in the spring of twenty twenty-four to two hundred and fifty-three students the following year. In science, you will find the trend to be a lower percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations, but we are still over the state average of exceeding and meeting I'm almost done, I promise. Now, we will look at the data of proficiency by program for ELA across all grades. The programs examined include English language learners, free and reduced lunch, students with Section 504 plans, special education students, and general education students. This chart details the distribution of ELA achievement for each group across the two testing years. As I mentioned, the data may be analyzed in many different ways. Using this information, we are able to determine the curriculum and intervention needs of the program and the students within each program. Although focused on two different groups of students, this dataset provides another lens by which to analyze the information. Combining this with other information and instructional measures, we use this to determine individual student needs alongside with programmatic implementation changes. For example, the data for the multilingual learners can be compared to access scores. Those were also presented in August, and it allows us to determine the intensity of intervention and supports needed for students. When the data is analyzed by Title I designation, for example, we can also determine how the students in the Title I program achieved with the interventions we provided there. In special education, staff is also able to combine this information with other measures to cater to individual student needs. Another important factor to consider when reviewing this data is the repetition of students in the counts. For example, a student could be a multilingual learner on free or reduced lunch and receives special education services, so they're counted in each of those subcategories. This slide shows the proficiency by program for science in all grades. As you can see, we continue to track the proficiency at the levels described previously, and in science, the percentage of special education students near proficiency is at eleven percent, and we continue to cater our program to meet the needs of those students. Finally, here, we review the proficiency by program for math. This chart illustrates the achievement distribution again for math defined by those educational programs that I described. You will also see a slight increase for students in special education who are approaching, meeting, or exceeding expectations from one year to another. And those students are bracketed in the, looking at it from the right, the third and fourth bars. So, what happens with all of this data? The district utilizes this data for comprehensive follow-up. This includes data analysis with multiple measures using tools such as iReady and Linkit. In the summer and early fall, the district administrative team reviews the data when it's released to identify strengths, areas of growth, curriculum trends, and student needs. Furthermore, our district and school data teams, which are comprised of teachers and administrators, identify students in need of intervention and the specific skills to target in literacy, mathematics, and science as needed. Our intervention framework aligns with the New Jersey multi-tiered system of supports. Tier one represents the universal supports implemented across all classrooms and includes foundational practices such as flexible grouping, guided reading, explicit instruction, and differentiation. Other key tier one best practices include cooperative learning, modeling, guided practice, enrichment, active responding, regular feedback, and positive behavioral supports. When students require more targeted support, they move into tier two or tier three of the multi-tiered system of supports. Tier two involves providing small group interventions in addition to core instruction in tier one, and tier three involves potentially an increase in the frequency and/or duration of small group interventions. We continue to individualize instruction for those students because they've been identified as needing the most need, having the most needs. Now, we'll move on to the DLM. The DLM assessments, Dynamic Learning Map, are designed for students with the most significant cognitive disabilities. These students have been identified as unable to take the general state assessments because they are not appropriate even with accommodations. The assessments provide a crucial way for a group of students to demonstrate their knowledge and skills in English Language Arts, Math, and Science. DLM assessments are also vital in helping parents and educators set high expectations for their students. Students are tested in the same areas as the NJSLA, so that's ELA and math for grades three through eight, and grade eleven, science for grades five, eight, and eleven. This slide details the DLM scores by performance level. For ELA, a total of sixty-seven students were assessed, with twenty-seven students achieving advanced or at-target level. For math, sixty-nine students were assessed, with twenty-two students reaching the advanced or at-target level, and thirty-two students categorized as emerging. In science, thirty-two students were assessed, with fourteen students at the advanced or For students assessed via the DLM, we employ specific intervention strategies. Each student benefits from their IEP or IEP goals or Individualized Education Plan goals, and we provide strategic instruction based on that IEP. We consistently monitor their progress throughout the IEP process and report that to the parents. Our instructional interventions include differentiation, multisensory reading, and mathematics programs, varied instructional groupings, and the use of adaptive technology In summary, we are pleased to report that based on the NJSLA and DLM results for the spring twenty twenty-five administration, the district continues to outperform the state percentages in all tested areas. A few key highlights: overall performance, the district continues to outperform the state in all areas with exceptional mathematics results. One hundred percent advanced proficiency for students taking Algebra II in all grades. Perfect cohort growth, meaning cohorts moving from geometry into specialized Algebra I pathways in grades six, I'm sorry, in grades seven and eight, and eight, achieved one hundred proficiency in grade eight. Those are those cohorts that I described. The highest grade achievement was in grade four, with the highest overall proficiency rate in math at seventy-eight point eight percent. We do have a couple of significant gaps that we are working on, and we continue to look at our ELA scores and surpassing the state averages. In eighth grade, our highlight is seventy-five point three percent passing, and we have a high exceeding rate of exceeding expectations in ELA, with twenty-six percent of our students achieving that proficiency level. Just as a small thank you, I'd like to identify Sheila Cooper and Casey Detola, our Language Arts, Literacy, and Mathematics supervisors, who are here tonight to support me in my first presentation to the board for the NJSLA results. As, you know, as a new assistant superintendent, doing this, I have hounded both of them and asked tons of questions, and why do we do this and why do we that, do that? Teach me, I want to learn more, give me some understanding, and I think Casey has the patience of a saint to answer all of my leveling questions for middle school. So, I just want to publicly acknowledge them and thank them for their support in these past couple of months as we work on improving our outcomes for all of our students.
I may have a sub-say question.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, do any board members have any questions? Mr. Davis?
Jumping to guns.
That's okay.
And it's more of an observation than a question per se, but once again, and perhaps we could even say as usual, we find in the racial examination that our Asian cohort outperforms every other group, and that's consistent year after year after year. And assuming that we don't endorse the idea that somehow the Asian cohort is genetically superior, or their DNA is better or stronger than anyone else, it begs the question, why does the Asian cohort consistently outperform all the other groups in our community? First of all, that's good news for our community that we have such high-performing folks, but it may have something to do with sociological and family structures, the kind of support that is given outside of school, and those types of intangible things about which we can do probably nothing. But I think it can be important to recognize and acknowledge that certain behaviors and certain cultural practices can result in better results on the performance end. We just focus on the performance end, you know, where is each group getting to and is everybody performing well? But that really doesn't address the issue. If there's a concern about one racial group or another racial group falling behind or not performing as well, it would beg the question, what could be done to help that group or make changes, whatever the case may be, to improve on that?
And those are the kind of questions that we discuss as an administrative team all the time. And you examine the students, and when I mentioned that students can be in multiple programs and categories, you examine them that way as well. So, for example, multilingual learners, and where are they in the spectrum of their time here in school? What is their English proficiency level? And how are they scoring? And I think the really great piece is not just how are they scoring this year, but how are they scoring over time?
Right.
And analyzing the data that way as you're looking for response to intervention and supporting the students over time to make sure that you see that growth year after year after year. And I think that's the, we were having a meeting today about the data analytics, and the information that we're able to identify and hone in on with some of the benchmark assessments we're doing in the district will help identify the needs of our students and track that progress, even for our students who are exceeding expectations.
Yep. But here, here for the Asian community.
For math students in grade seven and eight that take Algebra I, that are Algebra I and Geometry students, do they take just the assessment in Algebra I and Geometry and also grade eight?
They take the grade eight ELA, just like everyone else, but in math, they only take the subject that they're taking.
Okay, thank you.
That's why the percentage of eighth graders is a little bit different than when you look at Algebra I or Geometry.
So, quick question, is this just based on the standardized test scores?
Correct.
So, do we do any comparison of standardized test scores versus actual grades? Because some groups may take this more seriously than others in the test-taking scheme.
It's interesting because one of the platforms that we have is Linkit, and we're able to take these NJSLA scores and various data points, district-made benchmarks, the benchmarks from those programs, Linkit, iReady, and the NJSLA scores and do data analytics. So, there's some, and Casey is my guru for this, there's a lot of data analytics that we can do. And the elementary principals, to start off, our administrative workshop really dove into the data in looking at the last year's iReady scores and the NJFLA scores. At that point, we only had the high-level scores, and analyzed the information that we received to make some instructional professional development decisions and intervention decisions. It's really high-quality work.
Let's try this, I guess it's.
My question is on page eight and nine, where I was really impressed with the Algebra II scores being one hundred percent. And then, looking at the detail on the next page, on page nine, the proficient went from last year twenty-seven percent to sixty percent, or actually, hang on, the, on page nine? Is the graph? And, so, exceeding went from last year was twenty-seven percent, or the year before, to sixty percent, and then the meeting went from, so that dropped. But, okay, so we're looking at the exceeding, so that's the five, it doubled, and I'm curious what, I mean, that's significant, so I'm curious what changed with the teaching, curriculums?
I, can I, yeah. Casey, can you come up to the microphone and address that question?
For what course?
This is for Algebra II. The exceeding, if you look at, yep, it went from twenty-seven percent to sixty percent, doubling.
Yes, so those are all our students who were freshmen, Algebra II students, and in the past few years, we've been making changes in the middle school in various ways, and this year is a new change too, to kind of help that. But we've been improving our assessments that we've been giving, and we're trying to model them in a way where students are more, they're more relevant for students, so when they take these word problem-based tests, these literacy-based questions, we're ready for them. So, we're improving on that end, and you can kind of see it in the data.
So, you said that this represents the freshmen? What about the other students who take Algebra II? Do they take?
So, the NJSLA is just through ninth grade.
Oh, okay, that's fantastic. Okay, great, thank you so much.
Lisa, I do appreciate your vision and the next steps that we're taking with this, and thank you for your state-mandated presentation, but I also want to thank the board members for their questions and to follow up on Mr. Marini's point too. And I think, Mr. Davis, these are, this is an outcome-based assessment, we are constantly looking at data and comparing it too, and I really want to just send a quick shout-out to the fourth-grade team at Amsterdam, who invited me to their data analysis team today, looking at some ELA data and what they could do with their books. There are these intricate, long, deep conversations that teachers have. Teachers don't ever show up in a room and wing it. They have good instincts when it comes to their students, but there's a lot of work before you get the results like we had right there. So, thank you, Lisa, and thank you to our staff, and also to Sheila and Casey for being here as well. My superintendent's report continues, and at this point, I would like to introduce Mr. Eckert to briefly set up our fiscal year 2025 school year audit presentation. Mr. Eckert to briefly set up our fiscal year 2025 school year audit presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Volpe. We have Andrew Kaczynski from Nissavachi here tonight to present the audit to the board and to the public here. He has also presented this last week to the operations committee. So, Mr. Kaczynski, if you wouldn't mind, come on up and share the audit information with us.
It would be my pleasure, Jerry. Good evening, everyone. As Jerry had said, I'm here tonight to discuss the results of the 2025 audit. I just want to touch on something very briefly. We're not able, normally when I come and present the audit, we accept the audit in the same night. We're not able to do that yet because we were subject to a federal single audit, meaning that we had over $750,000 of expenditures of federal grant money. And the compliance supplement for that has been released in draft, but I can't issue the report until it's finally approved. So this won't change anything financial of what we're going to discuss this evening. And as soon as that gets approved, I'll get a copy of it over to Jerry, and you'll be able to accept the audit at your next meeting following that. So I gave everyone a little handout prior to the meeting. I'm just going to really go through the highlights of the financials for the year. Starting at the top, this is just your general operating in your general fund. So what you're going to see there is that we ended up the year with $18.15 million in overall fund balance, which was a decrease of about $4 million from the previous year. Included in that balance of 18 million is about $3.2 million in your capital reserve account, $1,126,000 in your maintenance reserve account, your excess surplus that was generated in 2025 that is being used in your 2027 year is $4,533,000. And the amount that was generated in 2024, that's in the current budget that you're in now for 2026, was also $4.5 million. We had overall encumbrances at the end of the year of $1,072,000. And our unassigned fund balance, which is 2% of your expenditures for the year with certain adjustments, as I've said to you in the past, it's as healthy as the state of New Jersey will allow for you to be, is $3,054,000. And those are the components that make up your 18, $18,150,000 in fund balance. Moving on to the next section, if you don't know this about auditors, we love consistency. And this really speaks to how hard that Jerry works to keep the budget in line for the district. You'll see there that the $4,533,000 has remained consistent for the last three years running, which is great. We always like to see that that number stays consistent and that we're able to regenerate it year over year and keep that same number in there. Going down to the bottom, you'll see the activity that makes up the balance of your capital reserve and your maintenance reserves. For capital reserve, we started with $6,357,000. We were able to return to capital reserve $91,000 from your capital projects fund, which wasn't used for projects. And through the budget, we took out $3,250,000 for capital. That left us with an ending balance of $3,198,000. For our maintenance reserve, we started with $1.5 million. Through the year end transfer that we make when we do our June resolution for any amounts that are over that maximum unassigned amount, we were able to transfer back $126,000, and we took out $500,000 in our budget last year. That left us with an ending balance of $1,126,000. Onto the next page, I want to discuss the proprietary funds of the district. So we'll start off with the food service. And you'll see there in the middle column, it's the 630 2025 activity. In 2025, we had $2.2 million of operating revenues, which is all of our daily sales and whatnot. We had $958,000 of non-operating revenues. That's comprised of the National School Lunch Program as well as interest earned. And then we had total operating expenses of $3,676,000, leading us to an overall decrease of $503,000. We had capital assets of $291,000 and unrestricted operating balance of $776,000, which left us with an overall balance in the food service of $1,068,000. In the next section, you'll see the summer enrichment program activity for the year. For the summer enrichment, we had $271,000 of operating revenues and $242,000 of operating expenses, which led us to an overall increase of about $29,000, leaving us with an ending net position of $97,841. Down at the bottom, you're going to see the long term liabilities of the district. So this year, we paid off $1.5 million of our cereal bonds, leaving us with an ending balance of $30,870,000. Our net pension liability, which is something that we're required on a GAAP basis to record within the audit, but it doesn't really have a budgetary impact on you, it's only on the GAAP basis that I have to account for that within the audit. We had a decrease of $784,000, leaving us with a net pension liability of $21.6 million. Our compensated absences, we had an increase of $74,659 for compensated absences which were accrued, and we had payouts of $167,000 during the year, which leaves us with an ending balance of $5,45,000. Just as a note there with the compensated absences, we don't anticipate having to pay at any point $5 million in a given year. It's not something to be terribly worried about. It's something that Jerry monitors and tracks, and he's aware of upcoming retirements and payouts associated with that, more than likely much closer to that $167,000 than we will ever get to $5 million. Below that, you'll see our finance purchases payable, where we had a new finance purchase of $1.1 million, and we paid off $1.3 million, leaving us with about $9.8 million in finance purchases payable. And for leases payable, we paid down $1,376,000, leaving us with $1,334,000. I just want to discuss really briefly, within the report, what you're going to see is that there were three management suggestions, two of which are, I'm just going to really briefly go through. They're just presentation purposes within the financial report. It's nothing for you to be concerned about at all. It's just a change in the presentation. So we always like to put these advisory notes into the audit to make you aware of things that might be changing from year to year. When you're looking through the report, it might look a little bit different. Again, they're not really changing anything in the accounting per se. It's just the presentation that it'll wind up being in the audit. So those two, literally the one was just financial reporting model improvements, which I always say this, a lot of times when they have these improvements that you'll see in another five years, it'll be an improvement of undoing what they've already done, but that's fine. We'll do it as we have to do it. And the other one was the way that capital assets will be reflected within the audit. It's not going to really change any of your numbers at all, especially because we operate on a budgetary basis, so this will only impact things on a GAAP basis. And really, they're already being taken into account for the GAAP basis financials within the audit. It's just a matter of the way that they're going to get reflected within the notes and within the GAAP section of the audit itself. So again, nothing really there. We did still include about the open investigation within the audit. When I met with the operations committee, we felt that for transparency purposes, that it was best to probably keep this in until such a point that the investigation has been fully resolved. So we're just going to keep it in the audit. Again, everyone's pretty well aware of what went on with that and what's been ongoing with that. So we're just going to keep it in here, but it's nothing really to worry about. We're just keeping it in there in case anything should happen, that any type of liability develops, but we don't anticipate there to be one. And then the last thing, of course, is our recommendations. We had none this year. Throughout all of our testing, every request that we make, Jerry, Andrew, the rest of the staff in the business office, they're really on top of things. They got us everything right away. They have their documentation available immediately. It goes really smoothly for us, you know, for a district of your size, we're able to get things done pretty quickly because of the job that they do. So I did want to thank them for the job that they do and, you know, making my life a little bit easier. And if anyone has any questions, I'm more than happy to address them.
Jerry, any follow up from you right there?
I just wanted to thank Andrew and his team for their professionalism and made it as comfortable as possible for our staff going through an audit. It's, you know, in addition to that, I'd just like to thank all the business office staff, because without their hard work and dedication, this would not be as, would not have been as easy an audit as it was.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you.
You don't often get rounds of applause for our students.
I never get a round of applause.
So the final item in my superintendent's report first, I wanted to thank all the community members that came out to Cafe Emanato a week, a week and a half ago to discuss redistricting and full day kindergarten. We had about 20 people there. I bought everybody a few caffeinated drinks to help spark the conversation. Dr. Rabimbas, Mr. Handler, Mr. Lee, and I were there to answer questions from the public and also get input. You do have two more opportunities, and I wanted to point that out as well. On November 13th, we'll be back at 1 o'clock at Cafe Emanato. And then at 7 o'clock, we'll be in the Board of Education Conference Room located in the municipal building. Again, if anybody needs a caffeinated drink at 1 o'clock, the first five people will get that on me, and we'll have some snacks for everybody there at the Board of Education Conference, in the Board of Education Conference Room. Then, the reason why we're trying to get this public input now is we have presented previously what our three options are for redistricting and both full day K as a part of that. And by November's board meeting, I'm going to be discussing, and I'll be discussing with the board in advance at committees, at committee meetings, which plan we are going through. And then we will work hard on that to get everybody information about where the new sending zones are on or about spring break. So please join us at Cafe Emanato at 1 o'clock on November 13th, or in the Board of Education Conference Room that same day at 7:00 PM. And if you want a link to a redistricting video, we have that on today's agenda as well. And Mr. President, that concludes my superintendent's report.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we will move on to committee reports. And Ms. Jackson, would you like to start with?
So, education met on October 16th, and we discussed the nursing services plan, the HMS Grade Eight Hershey Gettysburg trip, discussion of field trips for overall analysis and review, the 2425 NJSLA and DLM testing results. And we had initial conversations on the 2627 district calendar. And that's it.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Nurse, HR?
Our committee met last Wednesday, and we discussed the personnel manner, a no-cost position name change, possible unified robotics, a possible policy change that was declined. We talked about the possible creation of new teaching position within the special education program, and we talked about all the great staff that we could recognize for their achievements.
All right, thank you very much. And Mr. Davis, operations?
Thank you. Operations met on Friday, and we discussed a number of items. One is on the agenda tonight, which is the comprehensive maintenance plan, which is essentially just a long-term forecast of the types of capital projects that will be undertaken. We also talked a bit about land acquisition. There's a long-term kind of a background conversation going on. It's been going on now for really a couple of years of, will we need a new high school someday? And if we want to have a new high school, where could we put it? Is there any land available? And so there was some discussion about maybe contracting with someone in the real estate industry who could advise on that. And no real action was undertaken, but it's been a long-term conversation. We did review the audit prior to this evening, and that was all in good standing. We discussed a new clarifying, a policy for budget preparation with some clarifying language, just details. There is discussion about creating a transportation maintenance facility. Right now, our school buses and other vehicles and other maintenance equipment is stored over on Amwell Road, Bloomingdale School. And there really is no appropriate facility for working on buses and doing repairs and oil changes. And so there's conversation underway for what could we do to fix that, to create a facility that would be more than just a garage, maybe a place to meet and so on, to conduct transportation business appropriately. And that's going to take a while to talk through that and get that all planned out, but that is underway. And we did do a review quarterly. The board does get a report, the operations committee, of overtime that's been accumulated. And the intent is to just keep an eye on those activities. Does it make sense? Is the overtime that's being paid productive and those types of things? And that was it.
All right, thank you very much. And I will cover the governance committee agenda. So the one action item was an update to the organizational chart, which had not been updated in over 10 years. So that'll be on the board's agenda tonight. Then we had a lot of discussion items coming out of the retreat that we had a couple of weeks ago, a couple of little things that we discussed about. So for example, for anybody who does pay attention to these meetings, the seating of the dais is adjusted slightly. That was kind of one thing we're trying for these meetings. The reason that, Mr. Eckert mentioned a name twice before, because we were originally considering rotating the voting order, so we're actually getting feedback from board members. That way, the same people aren't always voting first, middle and last, and giving some options to people to kind of not feel like they're the last vote or the first vote every single time these things happen. We do, we are bringing back the sign in sheet at the dais for people that want to speak. So when folks come up, please sign there, just so we have a record. Sometimes hard to hear on the video when we ask you to state your name and where you're from. And then we're exploring the committee of the whole, so we're doing some research there. And that would be instead of having committee meetings in small groups, maybe having one meeting a month that is committee meeting focused more in a public meeting. So we're exploring that idea. There was discussion about future meeting dates, and if we want to switch the day of the week or something like that. So that was just kind of discussed, no changes forthcoming. And then we talked about finalizing monthly recognitions. All right, I think that's really it for that. All right, we will show that as complete on the committee reports. And then we move on to public comment. I very much welcome everyone in the public during board meetings, there are two 30-minute periods of time, the meetings will be open for the comment, members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they're attending in person. There's a clipboard for all participants to write their name. Before commenting, please state your name and address. There's a thing and limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question and answer sessions, but rather offers opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instance where the board believes there's a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. Maybe times the member of the public, makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. Kind of the upcoming meetings act, privacy rights of public employees encompass their end, do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. So again, the first one is public input on the next year's budget or the action agenda, as well as any students, if they would like to speak during the first session.
We have to sign this? Do we have to sign this thing?
Good evening. Thanks in part to your generous support. Our team has proudly represented Hillsborough for 30 years. Last season, we advanced to Worlds with both technical and outreach awards, launching new initiatives for countless students across the district, and had a successful year representing Hillsborough with pride. To introduce ourselves, I'm Manu, and this is Asia. And we're both proud members of the Hillsborough High School's award-winning varsity team, robotics team, Team 75, the Robo Raiders.
This past season was incredibly successful as we were recognized at every competition. At Worlds, we won the gracious professionalism award, which honors exceptional sportsmanship, teamwork, respect, and high-quality work. We also celebrated our teammate Nirav, who was recognized for his achievements. But what we're most proud of is our time that the team has dedicated.
what we're most proud of is our time that the team has dedicated this season to inspiring the next generation of innovators. Since June of 2025, we have spent over 2,000 hours volunteering, running hands-on STEAM sessions, and mentoring 10 new robotics teams across the district. One of our most meaningful events was our robotics summer camp at Amsterdam Elementary, where we introduced robotics, teamwork, and problem-solving to over 100 students. We also led STEAM sessions at the All-Day Learning Center, engaging around 30 kids from the ages of 3 to 6 each week for nine weeks. Another impactful event was RoboCon NJ, a massive public event that Team 75 hosted, where we hosted STEAM stations and mentored 14 FLL teams about the basics of robotics and first core values. We were especially thrilled to have Mr. Volpe and Mrs. Stats join us and stop by our stations. It meant so much to see you there, supporting our students. Thank you for being a part of that moment.
And that's not all. Our Borough Blast FLL tournament is just around the corner on November 23rd, and we would love to see you all there. And we also would love for you to visit our warehouse to meet the team and see our projects, as we continue to inspire curiosity, creativity, and a passion for STEAM together.
Overall, we are incredibly proud of how our team continues to grow in skill, and most importantly, in our impact. Every robot we design, workshop we lead, and student we mentor strengthens our district's STEAM community. This year, we focus on expanding opportunities for our students to engage in robotics and discover their curiosity. We're also deeply grateful to our mentors, volunteers, and sponsors for their continued support. The encouragement helps us build more teams and inspire more young minds to think big.
With your help, we recently expanded STEM opportunities by launching our Unified Robotics Team, bringing neurodivergent and neurotypical students together to compete. Once again, thank you for yours continued support and for being part of our journey. We are Team 75, the varsity robotics team, dedicated to inspiring the next generation of thinkers, and we can't wait to make Hillsborough proud this season. On behalf of the team, please accept this sponsor plaque as a thank you for your continued support. We hope you have a great evening.
Okay. We have no other public comment. We will close the first public comment session. We'll move on to the approval of minutes. Motion to approve regular meeting minutes. Trying to look at the date. On October 13th, 2025, and motion to approve special meeting minutes, October 14th, 2025. Can you get a motion in a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We'll move on to the action agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask for the board's consideration to approve the following motions in the area of education, travel and related expenses, the superintendent's HIB determinations for the attached cases, 25-26 nursing services plan, stipends for staff teaching RBCZ concurrent enrollment courses, accepting funds from Special Olympics Unified Champion Schools, reaccepting the Teacher Climate and Culture Expansion Grant in the amount of $60,962, submission of a grant application to Sustainable Jersey Grants Schools for the funding of a hydroponic greenhouse system, and overnight trips.
Take it a motion in a second?
Second.
Any discussion with the board? Ms. Nurse?
I just have a question. I know that the Hershey trip is back on. I was able to be informed about some of the discussion that happened. I just, if somebody can remind me who was there about what our plans are for the future. Did we decide, like, if this is back on because we are going to approve it for one more year, and then there is a halt to talking to the 7th grade about a future trip?
Can I, can I clarify one thing, and then the board members who are there can certainly do it. The, the motion 11.8, I think I'm expecting that to be separated out and discussed further about this year. And then, yes, there was discussion with Dr. Trabalski about what are we doing in future years? And if anybody wants to look at that in detail, when you have a moment, the recording of that whole conversation was sent with you. But yeah, this is on because it was a non-unanimous item. Some people wanted it to move forward, some people didn't. So I'm, I know we have a motion, or asking for a motion, but I'm expecting that that be, is probably going to be separated out and discussed further.
I waited for the pause, and I didn't see the separation, which is why I asked, because it goes...
I could, I could be wrong.
I'd like to have it separated out, 11.8, only the Hershey trip.
Okay.
So...
So, okay. Any discussion before we vote on that, split it out? I guess. It's just to split it out. Just split it out. Okay. Can we take roll? Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yeah, yes, sorry.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Sorry. Are we separating this?
This is the motion to separate it.
To separate?
To separate, yes.
Yes.
Ms. Treheal?
Yes.
And Mr. Marini? Yes, motion passes. All right. So on the everything else for now, is there any discussion, or we can move to, to roll on that one? Okay. Seeing no comments, we'll take roll on everything but the Hershey trip. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Ms. Treheal?
Yes.
And Mr. Marini? Yes, motion passes. All right. So if there's any discussion on the Hershey trip, we can have a discussion now.
I'm just going to go back to my question. If somebody was at the committee meeting and can talk about, like, are we, this is just this year, but there's going to be no discussion with the 7th graders?
Until there's a decision. So I think at this point, if they're not starting any, any financial collections or anything for next year, and not promising the trip to anybody, they want to have the board's approval before they begin any fundraising or any activities for, for future years.
Okay. And that will go and be discussed in committee and then to the full board again?
Yeah. So we had a presentation, and there were a bunch of questions that he answered. You know, they kind of dug deeper and did some more surveys on that. The question was raised about parents being financially able to do this, and I think the comment he made was families that reach out that have issues, we have alternate ways of supporting those families as well. So we generally don't want to have families say, I can't afford, they don't go. So there is alternate funding that they receive in special situations. So I think he was trying to downplay a little bit the financial end of it, that there are parents that don't want their kids to go to an overnight trip and don't want, don't think that's appropriate, or maybe don't think there's educational value in one piece or the other. And there's, there's other elements in there. So they did a survey. That's discussed in the presentation. So you can listen to the recording.
No, somebody spilled me in on that, but I am still wondering what the process is going to be, because I know it was an issue. And regardless, if 30% of the class doesn't go, regardless of the issue, I think that we definitely need to explore other options and, and not have an overnight, if that is a big reason, and be able to have a whole class that can celebrate together. So I was just wondering if that's going to then continue to be discussed in education committee, and because there's strong opinions to be brought to the full board before there's any discussion with any of the 7th graders.
So he basically said he's welcome to come back and chat and provide any other details that we're looking for at any point in time. So if we want him to come to a different committee as well, I'm sure he'd be amenable to that. We obviously don't want to take up every night of his week with committee meetings all the time, but he basically said, anything you need, I'm happy to collect that data and give you other options. And he, he did not seem vehemently opposed to saying, no, this is our trip. We have to do it. It was more like, hey, it's at the board's discretion. We continue until there's another decision to do something otherwise. But for this, he said he's not starting anything until there's a decision from the board. He's heard, he's heard the comments that it's not just go until we tell him stop. It's now, we'll make a decision on this.
And if I can just add something, it wasn't discussed at the committee meeting, but Dr. Rabimbas and I had a discussion afterwards about what we're trying to do moving forward to help the board make well-informed decisions. And it's good to have outside eyes on some of the things we've done in Hillsborough, which we've done in Hillsborough, because we've always done it that way in Hillsborough, because that's how the previous people before us did it, because that's how the previous people before them did it. So Lisa, I don't know if you want to just very globally speak about what you're looking to do moving forward about class trips, like, kind of for an upcoming year, about those ones that we're aware of and know, because right now they show up as, you know, singletons, but do you just want to talk about what your vision for that might be?
Sure. So what, what we've discussed is really having an analysis of what are the traditional field trips that are brought forward year after year, between the, the regular day trips and the overnight trips, like this 8th grade trip, and come up with a system that, there's two parts. First, forming a district-wide staff committee to look at our field trip process, looking at things like the cost. When are they going? How much class is missed? Where are they going? How long are they out of school for? So some big overarching questions. And then looking at some trips, for example, like the competitive trips that are done yearly, so that they could be done as opposed to one-offs, as a collective approval from the board, just like we do for those regular trips that happen year after year in the spring for the upcoming school year, do the same type of thing in, in that regard, for those competitive type of trips, so that it doesn't just sneak up on the ed committee or on the board, that there's some process to it. And a, a lot of, I'll use the word discussion and, and analysis of why are we doing what we're doing? And is it, is it worth the lost class time to go on some of the trips that we've been going on? And, and having those discussions with the staff. So then we can bring that to the ed committee and, and discuss it further with the board. That's some of the overarching ideas.
And I think you, I think maybe you mentioned in the call that there's a differentiation at times between this is a huge national event versus this is national championship or something like that. So we don't need to go on every big event necessarily that is out there, but some things do have a higher level of importance to the group that's performing recognition versus actual, like, we qualify for nationals as opposed to we qualify for this big event that we're going to.
We just want to do a thoughtful analysis, so we don't inadvertently not give students the opportunity to participate in some of the things that are, are important to our programs.
Mr. Treheal?
In reading the attachments that Dr. Trabalski had shared with the, with the board, what I was most surprised about was the, I mean, so about 150 responses for the survey, and about half rated the value of Hershey Park as five on a one-to-five scale. If you count one, two, three, and four, that was 50%. I was a bit surprised about that in terms of the value of Hershey Park. Also seeing one, knowing that on the attachment, it says it's $535 for this coming year, and seeing in one of the survey responses that the cost was $700. But then thinking about it, I guess souvenirs, maybe getting a dress or an outfit for the dinner dance, food. I mean, so I can kind of see how it would potentially be higher than the list cost that's here. And so in reading the, and I did also see that many parents were in favor. They said that this was a great experience for their child. I think this kind of goes back to the, if 70% of the students are participating and 30% are not, whether it's because of cost or for some other reason, to me, it seems like this is, is, I can't, I'm not in favor of this. I mean, my kids enjoyed the trip, and I, it was 350 at the time, and that was still a lot of money. As the price keeps going up and the number of participants go down, I don't see the value of this trip as being a bonding experience for the entire 8th grade class. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Stats?
What I find disappointing is, a year ago, I mentioned those specific numbers, that I believe last year, for, in spring of 2024, the cost was about 530, I believe, and 70% of the class went and expressed concern at that time. And it wasn't until recently that there was any movement made as far as exploring that. So I just worry, I'm glad that there has been some exploration as far as alternatives and, and delving into the data and, and surveys. But I, like last year, the reason, oh, oh, no, we should, we should approve this trip because they already, you know, they're already counting on this, et cetera, et cetera. Well, that's happening again this year. So I just worry about always having that as a reason. Yes, it is a wonderful experience. It brings back wonderful memories for those who participated in it. For those who participated in it, 30% do not participate, for whatever reason. There used to be 90% participation, now it's down to 70%. So it, according to the survey, there was no one certain reason. There was a significant number that attributed to the cost. But if we want to have this, if we're trying to serve all students, we should make sure we're providing opportunities for all students. It's still a wonderful experience. Again, they might be comparing it, but it's still going to be a wonderful experience, for that can be part of a whole class experience if we have it as a one-day, less expensive experience.
So I'll just make the point that he said they're not starting work on next year's trip until there's a decision made. So I know you said it continued again this year. It did. But they're not moving forward with next year's until there's a completion for that discussion.
I know.
Oh, make the point clear.
When you say decision made...
So they're not announcing that the trip is happening? They're not starting fundraising for the trip at this point?
Regardless of what our vote is tonight for...
Correct. This is just for this year's trip.
For this year's trip.
They've already, they already spent the year doing fundraising for that.
Correct. Okay. Just wanted to...
I, I think, I am, I just wanted to not, I want to represent myself correctly. So I am a big supporter of field trips. I think I find the value in them. This, to me, is a celebratory field trip that we hit 8th grade. It's a milestone, and I find it very different than anything academic. So I, because what Ms. Stat says, we somehow got into this hole. We fundraised again. We're ready to go. The expectation is there. But I think, so I will vote yes to this field trip for this year, but I won't sit here again next year and be in the same predicament. So I think that we have to be more preventative instead of reactive moving forward, and not just not start fundraising, but maybe possibly give a clear message that please do not get any expectations up, because this may be changed. So I, I think that needs, my recommend, I mean, I suggest that we address that instead of just staying quiet, so expectations aren't even set forth. Because sometimes, even if the fundraising doesn't start, if the expectation is set that this has been the trip for, forever, and how dare you change it, is, is a problem. So I would like to also get ahead of that, because, like I said, next year, like, some people feel the pressure to do it just because is not going to sit with me next year.
I think that message was, I think the message was provided that we're not communicating the next trip unless the board is okay with us moving forward then. So I'm sure Dr. Trabalski is awaiting our kind of feedback, our next set of questions, so that he can start preparing for whatever it is he can prepare for.
Yeah, but I guess just, like, there's a difference between not saying anything and proactively set, readjusting expectations before they're too high to, you know, then you're negating things, and, you know, nobody wants to be in that predicament of disappointing children who are looking forward to something. So I just think that that seed probably needs to be planted, that Hershey Park is no longer a definite possibility, or a definite thing that's happening.
Yep.
I think, though, I'm sorry, to that point, it, it's not inconceivable the trip gets broken apart, that it may not be an overnight. So it's not as though Hershey's out of...
No, exactly.
...consideration, but I, I think that's really what starts driving the price up.
Yeah.
So for me, the, I feel the same way. Nobody wants to deny you something, but I think the cost is gotten absor, absorbent at this point.
That's a good point, Ms. Jackson. He did say, like, we still could do Hershey, we still could do a dance, we still could do a dinner, we could still do all the things, and potentially in the future, split those into two different events, or just do them in two days, you know, that, without a hotel stay involved.
With no overnight.
Yeah, which is the primary driver of the increased cost, the overnight busing, the overnight, everything, that, that, you know, major, more than half the cost is the fact that it's overnight.
Yep.
So I think that, that was well heard. I think he said, listen, we have options. We could change the location. We could do a bunch of things, and let's work together to find something that the board is happy to support. Ms. Stats?
I just want to make two points. And also, they could have, if it is just a one-day trip, not an overnight trip, they can still have a dance.
Right.
But at, at the school. And also, you know, my experience with, with our students... And also, you know, my experience with, with our students is, you know, if it ends up that there, there is no overnight trip this year, next year, whatever, I can, I could, would expect they might be disappointed, but I think we have very compassionate students who would, you know, appreciate wanting to take into consideration their fellow students who, who would be more likely to attend the trip and hopefully that'll assuage their disappointment.
Right, okay. Any other comments before we vote? Mr. Hill?
So one thing in the document that's attached, it says dinner dance in celebration of class of 2028. First of all, not sure what class, are they talking about the eighth grade class of 2020? So that would be wrong because that would be 2026. They don't mean the high school class because that would, I mean, unless I'm counting wrong.
I'm not sure what you're referring to, but it sounds like it's probably a typo because we're not talking about 2028.
Right, okay. That would be on the HMS Hershey dash Getty trip, page one. The other thing that was interesting is that when, and I, and I understand how people are going to vote the way they vote. What I thought was interesting was the comments about that the value at Hershey was not what they expected because of the lines were being so long that the kids basically got to ride three rides. They were, people were very disappointed about that. So it, it seems like that we're making a big deal about this trip, but the actual experience seems like it's not quite what it was in years past, so.
I want to thank everybody for your comments. Are we okay to move forward to vote? Does anybody have any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to roll on the trip.
I think we need an act of motion.
Oh, oh, sorry. We, yeah, we need to.
We did a motion in a second before we.
Well, separate, we did. No, we did one before the conversation. Okay, I didn't get her one. I'll do another one, a motion in a second to, to vote on this one.
So moved, second.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning-Beater?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
No.
Mr. Hill?
No.
And Mr. Marini?
Yes, motion passes.
Thank you. I'd ask for the board's consideration to approve the following motions in the area of human resources, resignations, appointments, rescinding appointment, change in employment status, leaves of absence, revised science lab coverage, revised instructional assistance stipend, sixth and seventh period coverage, student teachers, winter coaches, extra coverage, job description, and approving the suspension of a district employee.
Can I get a motion in a second?
Second.
Move to roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning-Beater?
Yep.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
And Mr. Marini?
Motion passes.
Yes. Thank you. In the area of operations, I'd ask for the board's consideration to approve the following motions, monthly bills, monthly financial statement, financial status, line item transfers, the submission of the CMP and annual maintenance worksheet, out of district placements for the 25, 26 school year, and approving the school district organizational chart.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved, second.
Any discussion by the board? Seeing none, we'll move to roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning-Beater?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
And Mr. Marini?
Yes, motion passes.
Thank you. In the area of policies and regulations, I'd ask for the board's consideration to approve the following motions, approving policy 6220 for first reading.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved, second.
Any discussion by the board? Seeing none, move to roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning-Beater?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
And Mr. Marini?
Yes, motion passes. Move on to the final public comment session. We very much welcome everyone in the public. There's a clipboard for all participants to write their names. Before commenting, please state your name and address. There's a term of public limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions. We rather offer opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instance, the board believes there's a misunderstanding or an accuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. Maybe at times when the member of the public makes a comment or has a question about personnel hiring decisions, kindly note the Open Public Meetings Act and the Privacy Rights of Public Employees and companies therein do not permit the board discuss personal issues in public session.
Good. Hi, Amy Salinger, teacher at Otten Road and HEA, First Vice President. I just wanted to comment about what I think I heard about a possible committee or evaluation for determining future field trips and things like that. And I'm sure it's in the, the works, but I just wanted to add that hopefully all stakeholders will be included, meaning students, staff who run the field trips, things like that. And I also heard a comment about like, if it's a big national event, then yes, they should go, but just as a, as we're in the planning stage, you know, a lot of times they only get to those national events if they go to the regional one or the local one. So just keeping all of that in mind. I love the idea of a, of a district-wide look at it so that it's fair and consistent across. So just keep in mind all the stakeholders when that sort of comes to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Hi, good evening. Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association. I just wanted to return to the conversation that took place about item 7.1, which was the statewide assessment results. And I understand the district's having a conversation about it. They're looking at data and different points that are in there. And I applaud board members wanting to delve into that. I would encourage everyone, and perhaps the administration can assist, with supplying more information about issues with statewide testing and the fact that some statewide testing is based off of semi-debunked or fully debunked pseudo-scientific ideas from the 1900s, like 1916. So as we're discussing demographics, I just want to caution the board against overreliance on tropes or stereotypes one way or another, because even if we're doing a positive one, we may inadvertently be reinforcing a deficit mindset within some of our students and discounting the fact that there are socioeconomic factors that come into play through test questions that are not reflected except for deficits within those demographics information when viewed in isolation. There's a lot of information, a lot of research out there about this, but I strongly encourage the board to change the mindset from looking at demographics and consider perhaps that something is wrong with the test, not the child. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hello, Lashia Gaper-Balas. Have a couple of things. So I wanted to thank all the volunteers who came out on Sunday for the Borough Aware Municipal Alliance Adopt the Highway, which was on 206, you go and clean up trash. It's with New Jersey Clean Communities. We had students from peer mentoring, women's wrestling, I think other student groups, as well as the police and other neighbors. It was awesome. I wasn't able to stay because I had to take my daughter to a class, but I was there to greet and make sure everyone knew that, you know, if you see a, a needle, don't pick it up, have an adult make sure you look at it. If you see something that looks like a vape or, you know, USB drives, don't pick it up. It could release with fentanyl, just be careful. So, but we're very thankful for everyone for helping us keep Hillsborough beautiful. Also wanted to mention again that the Hillsborough HSA is having a, a showing of Wicked Two on Saturday, December 6th at 10:30. You can preorder tickets for $13 online or it's $15 out the door and snacks are going to be 20% coming back to the HSA. Also, don't forget with Red Ribbon, there is a poster contest and adults can join it too. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, seeing no others, I will close public comment. We will open it up to the board and Ms. Montoya, you have a comment you want to make?
Hi, just some positive updates from the high school. So regarding extracurriculars, we had the 31st Annual Marching Band Festival where Hillsborough High School's marching band showcased our strong performance acts. And also the HHS math team placed fourth in the Central Jersey Math League competition on September 17th. Regarding athletics, our football team beat Hunter and Central 33 to 8 on the last regular season game this past Friday, so our next game's on Saturday if you want to consider supporting. And there were also, there's also been a lot of senior nights in the various fall sports and there's been high attendance at all of those, so that's showcasing a lot of school spirit. There's also a penny and soda job, soda tab drive coming up. So the high school's competing with HMS and Aris, so that'll bring in various fundraising and promote more school spirit. And that's about it for the high school.
All right, appreciate the updates. Thank you. Any other board members? Mr. Hill?
I wanted to share that I was at workshop last week and I wanted to give some highlights. I'll be happy to share the documents that I took notes on as well as the, some of the speakers gave handouts. So the first one that I went to was, or one of the ones that I went to was DEI Under Fire, Where We Are, How We Got Here, and What's New by David Rubin. I do not expect that I'll be able to do him justice, but he covered DEI, the, the law, the what's going on in the federal government, what's going on at the state level, and he did it all in 45 minutes. Basically, bottom line is New Jersey is doing a great job in terms of, you know, our, what did he say? New Jersey law against discrimination is a far broader law than the federal government. And so, yes, basically was very positive. Sorry that I'm not giving more details on it. I don't want to misspeak. The other talk that I went to that I thought was really interesting was Life After Chapter 44, What's Next for Benefits, and that was given by Brown and Brown. And one of the things that I thought was really interesting is that when chapter 44 is, is, I guess sunset and if there is no other option, I guess that's December 31st, 2027, one of the things that we were talking about in that, in that presentation was about the High Deductible Health Insurance Plan and how that can be a very positive option for individuals. It's currently in the private sector, but bringing it into the public sector may be an option that would save the district as well as employees money. So I'm happy to share those notes with the team.
Thank you very much. Ms. Nurse, you look like you may want to make a comment?
I, I think I do. I'm just going to try to. It's, it's, it's far away, chapter 44 for sunsetting and, and for us a little bit, I think, further because the contract, I think, expires after the sunset. But I, I just caution about bringing some of those types of plans in for our, you know, for our staff. You know, we are in a situation where it is very hard to find and recruit very good staff members and we need to preserve what we can give our staff. So that's enough. I, I don't know what else I want to say about that and hopefully, thankfully, it's a couple few years off, but I, I just caution against such, such things.
Thank you, Ms. Nurse. If I may just respond, I, I guess I don't understand, and that's okay, we can take this offline. The reason I bring it up is it was one of the things that was, was talked about in the workshop and my personal experience may, I mean, I think the way high deductible savings plan, high deductible health plan, so HD, HP works, you maybe, it sounds like you're aware of what those are. Yeah, and not a fan of it. In our, in our particular case, when we had the choice to go from a, I guess, an HMO, like a standard, what is it called with the copay versus having this big deductible upfront, when we did the comparison of all-in cost for the year, the cost of going with a high deductible plan of the premiums was less than that of the HMO. And if you look at the worst-case scenario where you actually need to use the, the insurance like to the maximum, the maximum out-of-pocket was comparable. So you weren't going to be like underwater, so to speak. In our particular case, the company gave us like an incentive to go with the high deductible plan. And so basically what I'm trying to say is if you don't use the plan, like you don't use health insurance that much, you come in, you come out ahead. If you do use the plan, you're not, you're not like significantly paying a lot more. It's just a matter of how you're paying it, whether you pay upfront or over the course of the year.
I wouldn't deny that it's not good for some people, but I, I mean, we have to just make sure that we're very careful about what we're, what we're doing and what we're offering for the staff who works incredibly hard. So options, yes. Switching to something.
Oh, no, I don't think anybody was ever saying switching. I think it would be an option, and I agree with you. There are some individuals, like I would say that if you're an individual who does not use the medical system very much, then a high deductible plan would be useful for you. If you are a family that does make more use of it, then I would say that maybe that's not a good, especially if you want to balance out your, what you pay over the course of the year through paycheck deductions.
They normally allow, they normally allow for health savings accounts as well. And sometimes there's an employer match on the health savings account. And that health savings account will carry you through, you could take it through retirement that's your account, so.
Oh, that's actually something they did say too, is that it's a tax shelter in a way, that if you can, or tax, basically, and I forget the amount of money you can put into an HI, a health savings account, basically that money is, gets deducted off your salary so you don't pay taxes on it. And then we pull up pre-tax deduction and then when you pull it out to use it for medical expenses, it's also tax-free. You don't pay taxes on it. So for those individuals who can put that aside, it's a savings vehicle.
Ms. Stats?
I also attended the workshop, which is the New Jersey School Board's convention. I attended the, a session on career and technical education, immersive technologies, which can be a possibility considering our lack of space where students can experience career and technical education courses through virtual reality. Also a session called All Means All, strengthening connections with inclusive engagement and communication. And what I found really heartening was a lot of the suggestions that they were giving were things that we're already doing, especially the last few years. And, but, you know, and some, some of that we can add on to. Mr. Volpe and I and Mr. Petuccio, we also went to one on teacher recruitment, which was, don't you agree, was disappointing? We, we thought we'd be getting ideas for how to engage in teacher recruitment and it, I won't go into details, it was, it was, didn't really give us much. I also went to one on tier support in the high school, which was definitely of interest to me because, Dr. Rabimbas, you said that we are going to be starting that. So it was, is interesting to see how other districts are doing that.
All right.
I'd just like to make one last comment thanking the board for the proclamation earlier. I was a little taken by surprise, so I don't remember everything that I said, but it's genuinely appreciated. Thank you.
We did our job then. All right. There's no other comments? Go Dodgers? And I'll take a motion to adjourn. Those aren't Dodger colors. They're championship trophy colors. Can I get a motion in a second to adjourn?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
See you soon.